Verse 18, you'll notice we're skipping chapter 18. That's sad. A lot happens in chapter 18. Paul meets Aquila and Priscilla, one of the great couples in the New Testament that wherever they turn up, they're a blessing to the Lord's people and to the Lord's work. And Paul says in Romans 16 that they risked their necks for him. And they're a wonderful believing couple to emulate, but we simply don't have the time. We also meet the great early church preaching dynamo, Apollos, another great speaker who was helped by Aquila and Priscilla. And also in chapter 18, we have the Lord telling Paul, in spite of the persecution that he faced in Corinth, he tells him to not fear because he says that he has many people in that city. And he also tells him that he must testify in Rome. So Paul continues to get encouraged by the Lord, and that's what gives him boldness to suffer and to continue the Lord's work. But we want to jump ahead to Ephesus, which is the modern ruin of Ephes in Turkey, not far from Kushtasi, which is on the coast. And he crosses over from Greece where Corinth is, back over to Turkey, and goes to this city of Ephesus, which was a major port city in the ancient world. And it also, I think it was the river Caister that it was along. It also was a city along the Via Ignacia, which was a major road to the east in the Roman Empire. So it was kind of one of those places that was strategically important because a lot of people came through there. Acts 19 and verse 8. "And he went into the synagogue and spoke boldly for three months, reasoning and persuading concerning the things of the kingdom of God. But when some were hardened and did not believe, but spoke evil of the way before the multitude, he departed from them and withdrew the disciples, reasoning daily in the school of Tyranus." So this was a, what we'd call today, a rented building. And I've been in assemblies before where they rent school buildings, or where they meet in school buildings after school hours. And that's what was happening here. They'd meet in the school of a teacher called Tyranus, which sounds just like it is, a tyrannical type teacher. So I guess his students toed the line, you know, and they'd pay attention. But when the disciples used it, it was much better. Verse 10, "This continued for two years, so that all who dwelled in Asia," and again, we're talking about the Roman province of Asia, not the modern continent, "all who dwelled in Asia heard the word of the Lord Jesus, both Jews and Greeks." Now, along with that continued preaching of the word, also God continues to work miracles to authenticate these messengers. He says in verse 11, "Now God worked unusual miracles by the hands of Paul, so that even handkerchiefs or aprons were brought from his body to the sick, and the diseases left them, and the evil spirits went out of them." It doesn't say he charged for that, by the way, some of these modern people could take a lesson. Verse 13, "Then some of the itinerant Jewish exorcists took it upon themselves to call the name of the Lord Jesus over those who had evil spirits, saying, 'We exorcise you by the Jesus whom Paul preaches.'" Also, there were seven sons of Skiva, a Jewish chief priest, who did so. So this kind of produced a cottage industry, you know, where people saw, ah, there's money to be made in casting out demons. So there were these men that would go around and cast out demons. But we're going to see in Ephesus that there are false things in spiritism as well as true things. And that although these men were trying to cast out demons, they weren't doing it really in the power of the Spirit. They weren't believers. They're described as Jewish, and they're actually a son, or sons rather, of the chief priest. So they say, "We exorcise you by the Jesus whom Paul preaches." Now, if that's not impersonal, I don't know what is, you know? This isn't my Lord Jesus, or my Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, or our great God and Savior, Jesus Christ. This is by the Jesus that Paul preaches. Now, you're at least two steps removed from the real McCoy right there. You see, we learned in the early part of Acts that the name of the Lord Jesus carries with it authority. And that authority is powerful. It has power. But you can't use the Lord Jesus name as an incantation. In other words, people that get involved in these occult arts think that there are special names, and this is right down to the present day apparently, there are special names, and if you know these names, you have power. There are special terms. You always hear sort of in pop culture, probably not a real name, or at least it isn't now, but people say Abracadabra, you know? So Bugs Bunny, when he's pulling stuff out of a hat and messing with the magician in the cartoon, they say Abracadabra. Or Steve Miller Band did a song called Abracadabra back in the early eighties. So it's that kind of idea, that I can say this name Jesus, and it's like Abracadabra. It's like boom. That has power in it. Except the problem is, that's treating the Lord Jesus like he's the genie in the bottle. You know, you rub the lamp, and whoever has the lamp controls the genie. You get the three wishes, right? But the Lord Jesus isn't like that. Number one, he's not one who's at our beck and call. We've already seen, he is the Lord Jesus Christ. And he works through his Spirit in those who obey him. Earlier in Acts, we read that God gives his Holy Spirit to those who obey him. So everything about this situation was wrong. But it's not unusual even today. Africa is famous for this kind of thing. It's what we call syncretism, where they take elements of true belief in God and true terminology, true ideas maybe, and they mix it with falsehood. And we see this type of thing. So a lot of people will claim to cast spells and do certain things of sorcery in the name of Christ, or in the name of Jesus, whatever they may say. But it's interesting, at this point, the demon answers them. Now, it's rare that you get a demon talking to a person other than the Lord Jesus. They would sometimes try to talk to the Lord Jesus, and the Lord in most cases silenced them. But the evil spirit answered him and said, "Jesus I know, and Paul I know." And there's a slight difference there in the Greek. I think Mr. Darby says, "Paul I'm acquainted with," or something like that. "But who are you?" "Now the man in whom the evil spirit was leaped on them, overpowered them, and prevailed against them, so that they fled out of that house naked and wounded." So this guy literally beat them so badly that their clothes were ripped off in the process of this. And they go out of the house wounded and naked. That's a pretty good picture of false religion that tries to manipulate the Lord Jesus. It has no power for them. They can't use the Lord Jesus name the way they want. And so they're overcome and wounded, and they go out in this shameful condition. And verse 17 says, "This became known both to all Jews and Greeks dwelling in Ephesus, and fear fell on them all, and the name of the Lord Jesus was magnified." Do you see that? The Lord Jesus name, in other words, was made great. It was glorified, not the way they were using the name. They were using that name, and really it was a manner of, according to Exodus 20, it was like breaking the third commandment, "Thou shall not take the name of the Lord thy God in vain." This was a way in which they were vainly using the name of the Son of God. And so it was a serious sin. But for the believers, the Lord's name was truly magnified, and unbelievers were hearing about him. "And many who believed," verse 18 says, "came confessing and telling their deeds." Also, many of those who had practiced magic brought their books together and burned them in the sight of all. "And they counted up the value of them, and it totaled fifty thousand pieces of silver." So the word of the Lord grew mightily and prevailed. You see, people in Ephesus were interested in the spiritual world, but they were looking for power and wisdom in all the wrong places. They were trafficking in demons, and they were trying to use magic for their own purposes. The power of God is something altogether different than magic. But then as now, there was money to be made in these things. And in order to get power, these people bought these books that had secret arcane rituals and magic spells and different things in them. And this wonderful sign that now they were believing in the Lord, a true indication that they had repented, was not only that they confessed their sins, they confessed their deeds, but also they brought these books and burned them, even though they were of great monetary value. Now Brother Ezekiel last year told me a testimony of a man who got saved in Yonkers, and how he himself witnessed this man go down into the lavatory and take drugs out of his pocket and flush these things down the toilet, and to confess, "I'm done with these things. I'm making the Lord Jesus my Savior." And it's wonderful, although that brother continues to battle and needs prayer and needs encouragement and help, I'm sure. It's wonderful when you see someone coming to the Lord, and they put their money where their mouth is, so to speak, that they're willing to take things that are expensive in the world, and things that they once put great value on, and now they say, "That's nothing to me." For the Lord, like Paul, when he came to the Lord in Philippians 3, he said, "All of my religious attainments, all of my resume in Judaism, I put that aside. I count that as rubbish in order that I may win Christ. I want Christ, nothing else but Christ." So when you see people turning away from other things they leaned on, turning away from their horoscope, turning away from their seer, or their reader, or the one who would supposedly tell them the future, turning away from witch doctors and turning to the Lord, it's a beautiful thing. I know a brother who works in Asia for the Lord, and he was evangelizing a certain area, an island that used to be part of Indonesia. It was practically destroyed by the tsunami back in the early 2000s. And his brother was actually a survivor of that tsunami. But the interesting thing was, in doing evangelism in that community, it was among fishing people on this particular island, but they were very much into, I guess what the anthropologists would call folk Islam. So they had elements of Islam, they had names and certain things that would be from the Quran, but they weren't Orthodox Muslims. They weren't, you know, I'm sure people from Saudi Arabia, or Pakistan, or Egypt, who are Muslims would think, oh, they're not real Muslims, because they take a little bit of Islam and they mix it with local spiritism. And so they had magic, and they had witch doctors, and these people got together and tried to curse my friend and kill him, and he was unharmed. The Lord protected him from those things. But in any case, a group of these witch doctors, over a period of time, professed to believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. And the interesting thing was, he said, "We actually have hundreds of people coming to the meetings," because all of these witch doctors have acolytes. They have people that follow them because they think this man is the power. And so they want to be close to that man, they want to get the benefit of his power. Maybe some of them want to learn some of his secrets and be indoctrinated in this power. But when these men came to Christ, well, their followers came too. They said, you know, "Well, I guess we'll go along as well." It doesn't mean they weren't believers yet, they weren't when I spoke to this brother. But it was interesting how seeing people that were in that life now turn from it to Christ, that created a stir in the city. Now, not only that, but as the word grew mightily and prevailed, there was such a change in the city that the local business community, the Chamber of Commerce, noticed this. Verse 21, "When these things were accomplished, Paul purposed in the Spirit, when he had passed through Macedonia and Akkaya to go to Jerusalem, saying, 'After I had been there, I must go also to Rome.'" Well, he's going to do that, I must also see Rome, but he's going to go in a way that he didn't realize. "But he said, he went into Macedonia, sent into Macedonia, two of those administered him, Timothy and Erastus, but he himself stayed in Asia for a time." Verse 23, "And about that time there arose a great commotion about the way. For a certain man named Demetrius, a silversmith, who made silver shrines of Diana," that's her Latin or her Roman name, her Greek name is Artemis, "that brought no small profit to the craftsmen. He called them together with the workers of similar occupation, and said, 'Men, you know that we have our prosperity by this trade.'" Moreover, you see in here that not only at Ephesus, but throughout almost all Asia, this Paul has persuaded and turned away many people, saying that they are not gods which are made with hands. "So not only is this trade of ours in danger of falling into disrepute, but also the temple of the great goddess of Diana may be despised and her magnificence destroyed, whom all Asia and the world worship.'" Now indeed, the temple of Diana, or Artemis, at Ephesus was one of the seven ancient wonders of the world. And people the world over knew about the worship of Artemis. She was a fertility goddess. If you see any of the statues of her in a Bible dictionary or something, or maybe online, she has many breasts, and this is an indication of fertility. So people who want children, which was very important to people then as now, they could pray to Artemis, or people that want prosperous crops could pray to Artemis, or people that want success in business could pray to her. And here, you have this craftsman, Demetrius, he's a silversmith who makes a lot of money from the idolatry trade. He makes idols, these images of Artemis. And now so many people are getting saved, they're not buying the idols anymore. Now sad to say, if you ever go to Jerusalem, and probably some of you have, whenever you get around any kind of shrine, be it especially the ones that are supposedly Christian, you go outside the Church of the Holy Sepulchre, for instance, which is in the old city of Jerusalem, and there are all kinds of people there selling, you know, candles to burn to Mary, or to burn to whomever, to one of the saints. And there are people selling little shrines to various saints, and to Mary, and this kind of thing, and all kinds of ornate crucifixes. And so near these holy places so-called, there's a very vigorous trade in souvenirs and in selling people shrines. And it's not hard to imagine how that was happening at Ephesus. But it's an indication of how successful their testimony was, that people are hearing the gospel, and they're turning away from this false God. It's like what was described to the Thessalonians in 1 Thessalonians 1, "How you turn to God from idols to serve the living and true God, and to wait for his Son, Jesus Christ, whom he raised from the dead, the one who delivers us from the wrath to come." And that's what people were doing. They were getting saved and saying, "I don't need Artemis, I need the Lord Jesus." And it was starting to affect the local economy. The GDP was going down. And so they began to get worried about this. Now, we've seen this before in Acts, although we didn't study it in this study, in the men's study. Back in Acts 16, when Paul and Silas came to Philippi, there was a woman who was possessed by a demon who could supposedly tell fortunes. And they came along, and when that woman was following them and saying, "These men are servants of the Most High God," Paul greatly annoyed the Bible says, turned around and rebuked the demon and told it to come out of her. And so that spirit left her. And then the men who owned her, because she was a slave, they became very upset, because now the way they made their money was, of course, ruined. And here they are, taking them to the local judge and saying, "Now look what happened here. We had money invested in her. You know, we would pay for her to eat a little something, we'd pay for her to stay in a hovel, and she would tell fortunes, and this is the thanks we get," you know? That they go ahead and they cast out the demon, and what are we going to do now? You hear the violins playing in the background, you know, the sad music of the poor business owners that have lost their investment? I mean, think about this, men. They were making money off of the misery of that young woman, the same way that there are men the world over making money off of prostitutes. We were in a foreign country earlier this year, and we flew in fairly late at night. It was on a different continent. And in going from the airport to the bus station where we had to go, we were amazed at the number of prostitutes we saw. And not only prostitutes, like one can see those in New York, or Philadelphia, or Reading, or any major metropolitan area sadly, but women that were totally, in some cases, totally exposed, a woman with a blanket wrapped around her. And when the van we were traveling in came down the street where she was, she revealed herself. And I said to Naomi, what kind of, now we weren't looking for this, but you know, the woman's standing on the sidewalk right by the street, and suddenly it's like, oh my word, I can't believe I saw just what I saw. And I said, "What must have happened in this woman's life to bring her to that point of desperation, that she's standing out on the street openly displaying this shamelessly?" You know, what God puts in us, what God hardwires women especially, to cover themselves, to be modest, not to be seen, not to put themselves vulnerably. And she's out there selling her body. And you say, "Well Keith, probably drugs and alcohol are involved." Yeah, probably. And maybe demons as well, I don't know, because people who get into that world of drugs and alcohol say it opens doors to the spiritual world. Friends of mine that have been saved out of that talk about that kind of bondage. To see a human being, somebody's daughter, reduced to that position, and she was just one of scores of girls we saw. And everywhere we went in this place, there were these seedy motels. And not just, this wasn't like we were only in rough parts of town. You'd go to a regular neighborhood, they'd have a dentist, they'd have a restaurant, they'd have a seedy motel, where you can go in and have a liaison with a prostitute. And this was well-known. You know, this is an open secret. And I've been in country after country where I've seen that kind of thing. Now imagine, somebody gets saved out of a situation like that, which really is modern slavery. Someone gets saved out of that situation, and the business owners are saying, "Oh, you ought to feel for me." The business owners are going to the judge, saying, "You ought to recompense me, because my investment has been lost." How horrific, how perverse. And it was the same here in Acts. People are turning away from the idols, in Ephesus I should say. People are turning away from idols? Good. Because wherever people worship idols, they demean themselves. Wherever they worship these idols, they become like what they worship. So they worship these grotesque gods, and it wouldn't be surprising therefore, that they start to act grotesquely themselves. If you worship a beast, you'll actually become bestial. And you can see this in country after country where idolatry prevails, right down to our coming day. So when the gospel came in, and people were being freed, now there's pushback, but it's not spiritual pushback, it isn't an assault by the witch doctors, it's not political pushback, this isn't coming from the Roman authorities, or even from Jews in this case, this is coming from people that make money off of this idolatrous trade. In other words, it's a commercial origin to the persecution. These are merchants, these are businessmen, and they hate the gospel. Now, there are a lot of legitimate businessmen, even on Wall Street, who have money in part wrapped up in companies that are purveyors of filth, and companies that are purveyors of things chemically that will destroy people. Thankfully, we have good medicines and good drugs that help people with diseases, right? But we also have people that make things that destroy and harm people. And there's a great push in our country, and in Canada, and in Europe, to legalize these things more and more. And we're seeing it come about with cannabis being legalized, and people are saying, "Oh, it's no big deal." I mean, it's ridiculous. I don't think people knew we'd ever see a day in the United States of America when things like that were made legal. And we're seeing also in the realm of human sexuality, greater and greater perversion and things that are being legalized, and we're being told are normal, that are destructive to human beings. And of course, the ones who suffer the most in all these things are women and children, but there are men that suffer in these things too. It's a form of bondage. So when Paul and the Christians come to Ephesus, and they're preaching, and they're having such success, these merchants push back. Now notice the response in verse 28. This is Acts 19:28. "Now when they heard this, they were full of wrath." They're very angry, in other words, "and cried out, saying, 'Great is Diana of the Ephesians!'" "So the whole city was filled with confusion, and rushed into the theater with one accord." There's that phrase again, "with one accord." But here, it's unity in evil. It's not unity in the Spirit, it's not unity in the things of God. This is like when, "With one accord, they stopped their ears and rushed at Stephen, and drug him out of the city, and stoned him." Here, "They were with one accord, having seized Gaius and Aristarchus," Macedonians, Paul's travel companions. "And when Paul wanted to go into the people, the disciples would not allow him. Then some of the officials of Asia, who were his friends, sent him pleading that he would not venture into the theater. Some therefore cried one thing, and some another, for the assembly was confused." Now, that's the same word, ecclesia, that is used for assembly, or we would translate it church in many of our versions. And here, this is an assembly, but it's obviously not a church. It's a group of people that are called together, but they're called together, and notice what this isn't. It's quite a contrast to what an assembly is supposed to be. An assembly is called together by the Lord for his glory, right? This assembly is called together to oppose the Lord and his gospel. An assembly is to do all things indecently and in order, because God is a God of order, 1 Corinthians 14 says. But this assembly is confused. And rather than lifting up their voices and proclaiming Jesus as Lord, and worshiping God with the fruit of their lips, offering the sacrifice of praise that Hebrews 13 talks about, here it's all confusion. "Some cried one thing, some another, and they drew Alexander out of the multitude, the Jews putting him forward. Alexander motioned with his hand," which is a rhetorical device. In other words, when you see that in an ancient work of literature like Acts, they're about to make a speech. Well, I'm sure the good man would have. He wanted to make his defense to the people, but when they found out he was a Jew, "all with one voice cried out for about two hours, 'Great is Diana of the Ephesians!'" Now you go to a Giants game, or a Jets game, or some similar sporting event, how long do people shout the same thing? Okay? I mean, they might shout, you know, "Go, go, go," or something, or "Score a touchdown!" But all in unison, for two hours, this confused, unruly mob shouting, "Great is Diana of the Ephesians!" You know what the world lacks in truth? It has to make up for in volume. They have to keep shouting to try and make this lie sound plausible. "Great is Diana of Ephesians!" Well, the Lord Jesus, Isaiah tells us, didn't have to lift up his voice or cry in the streets. "A bruised reed would he not break, and smoking flax would he not quench." But there's coming the day, as Isaiah also prophesied, when he's going to bring justice to the islands, in other words, to the very edge of the earth. The Lord Jesus doesn't have to shout man down. The Lord Jesus doesn't have to come in like a bully. The Lord Jesus name was being made great by freeing people from their sins. And here's the contrast to this. And finally, the town clerk has to get up, the city clerk, and he quiets the crowd and says, verse 35, "Men of Ephesus, what man is there who does not know that the city of the Ephesians is temple guardian of the great goddess Diana, and of the image which fell down from Zeus? Therefore, since these things cannot be denied, you ought to be quiet and do nothing rashly." Even the city clerk is saying, you know, "This is absurd. What are you all on about? Why are you jumping up and down screaming?" "Therefore, since these things cannot be denied, you..." "Therefore, since these things cannot be denied, you ought to be quiet and do nothing rashly. For you have brought these men here, who are neither robbers of temples, nor blasphemers of your goddess. Therefore, if Demetrius and his fellow craftsmen have a case against anyone, the courts are open and there are proconsuls." Now do you notice that? It says that these men here weren't temple robbers, and they weren't blasphemers of their goddess. They weren't going out picketing the idolatrous temple. They weren't going out trying to physically assault the idolatrous temple. Nor were they going about just slamming Diana of the Ephesians every chance they got. The main methodology of the Christians, not that they wouldn't say that idolatry was bad and wrong, but their message was preaching Christ. And I want to tell you something. If you begin to tell people about the Lord Jesus Christ and show them what Christ is like, and speak the truth in love, they're going to start to think, well, how does that compare to what I was raised in? How does that compare to what the Temple of Artemis is all about? And they're going to see, there's no comparison. If the Spirit is attending your words and convicting them at least, they may close their eyes to it, but they'll see it nonetheless, that there's not a one like our Lord Jesus. Now he says here, "If Demetrius and his fellow craftsmen, if there's really something legal that's been done against them, the courts are open and you can take it to the proconsuls." In other words, tell it to the judge. And Luke is telling us, by inspiration of the Holy Spirit, see, the Christians weren't revolutionaries. The Christians weren't trying to upset the apple cart. They weren't coming in trying to subvert society. All they were doing was preaching Christ so people could be saved. And the backlash from the enemies of the gospel, that's really where the breaking of the law came. That's where people got crazy and where pandemonium broke out. So this whole thing dissipates and comes to nothing. And it's interesting again, how providentially, Paul doesn't have to go in and defend the Lord. His fellows don't have to stand up and defend the Lord. Even a Jewish man who wants to get up and make a speech against idolatry apparently, doesn't have to say anything, he's not permitted to say anything anyway. And the Lord brings this whole thing to an end, just using the local powers that be. Now that's very interesting, isn't it? And such is our God. You know, so often I meet Christians that are very bothered about what the government does. And I don't mean just in the United States. Because I spend a lot of time in Canada, the Bahamas, and other countries of the world too. And the world over, people say, our government has problems. Because guess what? Their government is led by sinners. Since we've all sinned and fall short of the glory of God, there's always problems in government. And people often say, you know, we Christians got to get involved and we've got to change this and that. Well, the Word of God really doesn't tell us that. And I think it's a matter of conviction, how far individual Christians are going to go in their participation in that process. Some believers think it's fine to vote. Others choose not to vote by conviction. Some believers participate in local government and run for office. Others don't do that. Some go for higher office. Now let each man be convinced in his own mind, what you do, do unto the Lord. But I'm quite certain about this, that the church in total, that when we talk about our corporate witness, our business isn't to fix the political structures of this world. Or to take on the outward manifestations of sin and defeat those things one by one. What we're called to do is preach the gospel. What we're called to do is witness to the Lord Jesus Christ. And guess what? When people get saved, they're not going to want to participate in these evil industries. When people get saved, they're going to be freed from many of these things. And so that's our marching orders and what we're called to do. Now, I've transgressed a little, I'm into the message time. So let me pause and see if anybody wants to give a short message at this point. Okay, therefore, for sake of time, I want to jump right into chapter 20, which also has to do with Ephesus, but now from a different side. We're not looking at now, the public testimony of the gospel in Ephesus. We're going to look at Paul's message to the Ephesian elders. So we're going to go on for a little time in that, and then I'll give you some opportunity to ask questions or comment. Acts 20, verse 17. "From Myledes he sent to Ephesus and called for the elders of the church; and when they had come to him, he said to them, 'You know from the first day that I came to Asia, in what manner I always lived among you.'" Now this is so interesting. He begins with his testimony. He begins with how he lived among them. And there is tremendous value in that. He's going to go on and talk about his Christian service, and the things he taught, and the warnings he administered. But if it wasn't that he had a life that was credible, a life that backed up what he preached, he wouldn't be able to say anything that we're going to hear. He's telling us, "My manner of living matched the ministry that the Lord had given me to do." He says verse 19, "Serving the Lord with all humility and with many tears and trials which happened to me by the plotting of the Jews." So humility here, this particular word for humility, has the thought of making oneself low. And Paul was willing to take the low place. And Paul suffered, he talks about the tears and the trials. And many of these things, as we've already read in Acts, were by the plotting of the Jews. They were persecuting him. They were opposing him. They were trying to attack him on occasion. But what was his reaction? Verse 20. "How I kept back nothing that was helpful, but proclaimed it to you and taught you publicly and from house to house." Brother Ezekiel mentioned that verse earlier today. Now when he says, "I kept back nothing that was helpful," that's a parallel expression, really the same word, to something he says in verse 27. He says, "For I have not shunned to declare to you the whole counsel of God." So verse number 20, "I kept back nothing that was helpful, even though I was being persecuted, even though they were attacking me, even though I knew this would bring me into controversy and I would be opposed. I preached the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth." That's basically what he's saying. "But proclaimed it to you," he says, using the word for making a special announcement, "and taught you publicly and from house to house." So when the assembly met in public, there was Paul teaching the Word of God for two years, when it met at that rented place, the school of Tyrrhenus. But also, it didn't stop there. He would go from house to house. He would visit the believers. And this is such essential pastoral work, that we get to know the believers in our local assembly. And we find out where they're at. And not what their physical address is only, or what their name is. That of course is a start. But we go and sit with them and talk and say, now how are you doing, brother? You know, how's it going for you? Are you in the Word? Are you praying? Is there something we can pray for? And many things the people of God go through. Well, Paul, he was going to preach the Word publicly, and he was going to follow up and teach it from house to house. He says, verse 21, "Testifying to Jews and also to Greeks, repentance toward God and faith toward our Lord Jesus Christ." So of course, this included evangelism, announcing the gospel, that he's going to tell Jews and Greeks, or Gentiles, repentance and faith. Those two-sided, that two-sided coin of the gospel. Repentance, seeing myself as God sees me, and saying, yes, I'm under His condemnation. I'm the sinner for whom Christ died. I deserve to go to hell. And faith, Jesus Christ is the Savior of sinners, and He's Lord. He's my Lord. I want to bow the knee to Him and receive Him as my Savior. And Paul went about telling whoever would listen, Jew and Gentile. There used to be a teaching, and it's still popular unfortunately in some places, that repentance was something only for the Jews. But I tell you, that's very dangerous doctrine. Because in the places where it's been taught, in North America, it very quickly leads to easy believism. It very quickly leads to a lowering of the standards of Christian holiness. And it means that people start to excuse sin. Because you dare not question a person's statement that I am a believer. No, Paul wouldn't have been content with that. He said, "You've got to repent. You can't just keep on living in your old sins the same way you did, and yet say, it's okay, I've got fire insurance because I believed in Jesus, I put up my hand, or I walked the aisle, or I signed a card, or I said the sinner's prayer, or whatever it is." Not that real people haven't been saved in all of those situations. But if they're trusting in the card, or the prayer, or putting up their hand, or walking forward, that can be a delusion that actually keeps them from faith in Christ. So he was preaching a serious gospel to them. And verse 22, he says, "See now, I go bound in the Spirit to Jerusalem, not knowing the things that will happen to me there." So he didn't know all the future, not in every detail, except that the Holy Spirit testifies in every city. Notice, the personality of the Holy Spirit again. A person is one who testifies. The Holy Spirit is the martyr here, the one who's bearing witness in every city, saying that chains and tribulations await me. So the Holy Spirit was telling him, he was going on this course, eyes wide open. Like the Lord Jesus, when he was going up to the cross of Calvary, he knew in specific detail what was going to happen to him, even more than Paul knew here. But here, Paul knows at least, like my Lord, I'm going to go up and this is going to hurt. It's going to entail chains and tribulation. Tribulation, that idea of pressure, a pressing down, things that oppress us and where we suffer. And as the Lord told us in John 16, "In the world you'll have tribulation, but be of good cheer, I have overcome the world." But he says, verse 24, "Here's my attitude, this is my reaction. But none of these things move me, nor do I count my life dear to myself, so that I may finish my race with joy and the ministry which I receive from the Lord Jesus to testify to the gospel of the grace of God." Isn't that wonderful? He says, "I'm going to suffer, the Holy Spirit tells me so. I know it's going to involve chains, imprisonment in other words. I know it's going to lead me into tribulation, but that doesn't move me. I'm not turning around and going back. I'm not camping out here and saying I won't go. I'm going forward, knowing what lies ahead, because the only thing that matters to me, even my very life, it's not worthwhile to me if I'm not serving the Lord in what He called me to do, and if I'm not finishing the race in the way they ought to finish." Now I referred to this earlier in the week. He says, "That I may finish my race," or the King James, "that I may finish my course with joy." And when we come to 2 Timothy 4, that letter that is couched in suffering, because the apostle's in prison and he's facing execution in Rome. And he says there in 2 Timothy 4, "I have finished the race." Here he says, "That's my goal. I want to finish the race with joy and the ministry which I've received from the Lord Jesus. I want to do the work." He says in Philippians chapter 3, "I want to apprehend that for which I was apprehended," Darby translates it. You know, the reason God saves me? I want Him to get everything out of me that He intended. All of the service, all of the gifts, all of the talents, all of my being's ransom powers, I want them to be used by the Lord to the fullest, to do everything He wanted. Complete service, in other words, to the maximum glory of the Lord Jesus. And he says, "to testify." So he uses the same word. He said, "The Holy Spirit testifies that chains and tribulations await me." But same exact word, he says, "My mission is to testify to the gospel of the grace of God." Now, we can't control whether those chains will come and whether that tribulation will come. If the Spirit tells us that's what awaits us, that's what awaits us. We can't change that, if we're going to be faithful at least. But he says, "Here's my job, not to worry about the chains and the tribulations. My job in it is to bear witness of the gospel of the grace of God." And you think about that potent testimony that Paul had, even while he was in prison there. That some of the guards, no doubt, came to faith as they saw the gospel in Paul. That maybe some of his fellow inmates, people like Onesimus, whom we read about in Philemon, came to know the Lord during Paul's imprisonment. And the glory of the Lord is manifested in this, and the truth of the gospel is manifested in this, that our gospel says to us, we're not living for the here and now. We're not living for this world. This world passes away and the lust thereof. We're living for the age to come. We're living for the new heavens and the new earth. We're living for glory, the glory of the sons of God, with our Lord Jesus Christ. And having the Lord Jesus is worth losing the entire world for. Because if I could gain the whole world and yet lose my soul, what profit would there be in that? That's what our Lord said in Matthew 16, to name one place. So this was Paul's way, and the way he was going to demonstrate and testify to the truth of the gospel. Now verse 25. He says, "Indeed, now I know that you all, among whom I have gone preaching the kingdom of God, will see my face no more." And that of course was a solemn statement. We'll see later their reaction to it. Verse 26, "Therefore, I testify to you this day that I am innocent of the blood of all men." Now, the prophets, like Ezekiel for example, were told that if they knew that there was a man heading to destruction and they didn't warn him, that they were complicit in the demise of that person. There was blood guilt upon them. But if they proclaimed the danger that person was in, and the remedy, the deliverance from that, that they weren't guilty of blood. If that person refused to heed the news, that guilt came upon that person. And Paul is able to say here, "I'm innocent of the blood of all men, for I have not shunned to declare to you the whole counsel of God. I preached all of God's doctrine to you. What was considered beautiful and right and good that people agree with, and what people thought was ugly and terrible, if it was God's truth in the Bible, I preached it to you. I didn't pull back from it, I didn't shrink from it, whatever the consequences might be." And I can tell you, as a preacher of God's Word, that there are many subjects that you just know. If I preach on this, I might take a beating for it. I don't mean physically. Now some believers in the world, that could happen to them physically, and it does. So some of our brothers in India, for example, who go out as evangelists, they know there's a high probability they're going to get beaten up, high probability they could be arrested, imprisoned, and also not out of the realm of possibility. And it happens with all too much frequency that they could be killed for the gospel. But here even, and even among people that are supposed to be believers, there are certain subjects that fly against the culture around us. And much as we don't want to admit it, people in our congregations are affected by the culture around us. They hear what the world says, and that affects their thinking. So if you get up in the assembly, for example, and you start to teach what the Bible says about men's and women's roles, you very often will find people that get upset. Because they think, oh, this is some kind of chauvinism. This is some kind of anti-woman screed, a diatribe against femininity, when it's anything but. It's fidelity to the Word. Because we know in studying the Word, and the book of Acts is an excellent example, God is not anti-woman. God does not sanction abusing and mistreating women, physically, emotionally, psychologically, or otherwise. God uses women in wonderful ways. But the Bible is explicit, women are different from men. And men are different from women. Or if you want to put it a little younger, boys and girls are different one from another. You know, I thought I was getting this parenting thing down with three daughters, and then God gave me a son. And now you realize, okay, I got to throw a lot of this out the window because my boy's quite different from my girls. You know, the world denies this. And Christians subtly, going through the educational system, or watching television, or listening to the radio, or reading the newspaper even, they can get a spin from the world on this, and they can think, ah, those Christians, they're anti-woman. Nope. You show me a woman that obeys the Scripture and what it says about women being silent in the church, and women being covered, so that the glory of the man might be covered, and the glory of the Lord Jesus Christ might be displayed, and her own glory of course too being covered. And a woman who faithfully does that is a woman who understands submission. And a woman who understands submission is a power- And a woman who understands submission is a powerful tool in the hand of God. We've had women like that in our assembly, that they're like the thermostat for the assembly. Now, we have some older saints in our assembly that literally mess with the thermostat, so it can get hot sometimes. I'm not talking about that. I'm saying spiritually speaking, I've known women in the assembly, without preaching a message, without getting up and saying anything at the break in a bread, without leading audibly in prayer, without overstepping themselves by their godliness, they've affected the whole assembly. People like me have been encouraged by them to keep preaching. When I first started saying things as a boy, just a 12-year-old, in the Lord's Supper, these little old 90-year-old ladies would come to me, "Keep it up, Keith." We enjoyed that. You know, it didn't matter what I said. It could be, I mean, if something was wrong, somebody would've took me aside. Don't get me wrong. But how ever much I stumbled and didn't say it just right, these sisters said, "It's so good to hear you get to your feet, man." And they didn't know, I was scared to death, Ezekiel saying, same with him. They didn't know how petrified I was. How I'd get up and say something, I'd sit down and say, "Keith, you're an idiot. You should never say anything again." And there comes Miss McCracken, this little, not a widow, she was actually a single lady, you never remember, "Keith, I enjoyed that." Or here comes Mrs. Godshaw, widow, "Keith, we appreciate that." There was an older brother too, Paul Fisher, "Brother, that was wonderful," he would say. Because he's Pennsylvania German, and his first language was that dialect. And to me, their words were gold. It meant all the difference in the world. And then there was Grandma Stevens, a wonderful lady, whose husband was an evangelist and a man I admired. He spent time with me in the Word, and they, as a couple, took me to conferences in my early teens, and they talked to me about the Scriptures. And when her husband went to be with the Lord, we said, "We love you so much, Mrs. Stevens. Come to our house every week for lunch." This was my parents' house, I was a teenager, a single man. And I said, "If it's okay with you, I'm gonna call you Grandma Stevens, because I want to adopt you." And Grandma Stevens would come up every week, and it didn't matter who my parents had over. They were like, "That woman is great, she is so encouraging in the Lord." And it got to the point where the elders, if there were some women in the meeting that were having trouble, that weren't getting along, kind of a Yodius and Sintike kind of thing, like Philippians 4:1, or 4:2, rather, they'd say, one of the brothers would say, "I'll talk to Mrs. Stevens and put her on it." And he'd go say, "You know what, Sister so-and-so, and Sister so-and-so, they're not getting along. I'll speak to them," she says. And she would go in her little gentle way, she was about four foot nine in heels. In fact, all the kids in the meeting, they would, at the coffee break, they would kind of back up to her and kind of see her, by as tall as she is yet. And one by one, they grew and they got as tall as her, and then they'd be taller than her. She's just a little tiny woman, but she was a giant in the faith. And if she went and talked to them, it was so sweet, and it was so loving, and she brought them together, and they buried the hatchet and dealt with it, whatever it was, and things went on before they were reconciled. And this dear sister, she was like the true yoke fellow that Paul says in Philippians 4, "You helped them, true yoke fellow, help Yodius and Sintike get together." And that's what Mrs. Stevens did. And the time would fail me to tell you about other examples that we've had. Now, the world comes and says, "Pff, you don't let the women say anything? You don't let the women do the same thing as men? That's all wrong, that's backward. Women are CEOs of Fortune 500 companies. Women are brilliant lawyers and doctors and scientists." I know that. I've known many of them personally, and I greatly admire women like that. But in God's assembly, a woman like that can also come and submit herself. And I've known women like that, that out in their job, or out in the community, they're high-powered women, but in God's assembly, they submit to the Word of God. And what an example to men, that women are knowing their place and doing it. Are we knowing our place? Are we stepping up and taking leadership? We're living in an age when young men spend so much time into their 30s playing video games, that they don't get around to getting married and starting a family, and maybe into their 40s in some cases. And if that's the will of God, that you don't get married to your 40s, there's no shame in that, okay? Or your 50s or your 60s, if God opens that door. If that's what he wants you to do, go for it, okay? But I'm talking about people that could be starting a career, could be getting out in life, and could be stepping up in the assembly, beginning to take responsibility, and at 25, 30, 35, they're not even close to ready. They're light years away from ready, because they're immature in the faith. And they've not spent the time in the Word, and they've not spent the time with the Lord, and they've not spent the time with older brothers and sisters who can help them get closer to the Lord. Now, I know that sounds hard, but I figured I'd demonstrate what I could mean by controversial. Because maybe you're sitting there and you're saying, "This guy's all wrong, and I hate what he's saying." Well, maybe you are, brother. I'm sorry. But I'm willing to take the Scriptures and say that this is how I see it. This is how I see it, as I travel around our society. And it's not because I'm anti-young man, I want the young men to prosper in the Lord. I want them to step up and serve the Lord and do whatever it is the Lord's gifted them to do. I don't want them all to be preachers, because God hasn't gifted them all to be preachers. But I want them to serve the Lord. I want them to be faithful members of the assembly. I want them to worship the Lord. And if we don't tell them the truth, how are they gonna do that? Because the world says, "Play, be a boy, don't be responsible." And all the sitcoms and all the movies and all the books aid in about that. The women are now the leaders. The women are the ones who take the lead. Men, let them go out and play, let them go out and do their thing. Boys will be boys. Well, that's not the Bible way. Men are to rise up and lead under God, not for themselves, but for the glory of God and for the good of God's people. So Paul didn't hold back anything in the truth, and so he tells them. Now, it's gonna shift from what he did to what their responsibility is. Verse 28, "Therefore, take heed to yourselves and to all the flock among which the Holy Spirit has made you overseers." Now, who had made these elders overseers? It was the Holy Spirit. A man doesn't go away to a school and come back with a credential and say, "Now, I'm an elder." A man doesn't get out of a Crackerjack box, a slip that says, "Congratulations, you're now an overseer." The Holy Spirit is the one who makes someone a real elder. Because if you're gonna be the kind of shepherd God wants you to be in the assembly, only the good shepherd can equip you to do that. Now, it's not to say we can't learn things in school, or learn things from other people, but ultimately, that desire, that heart for people, comes from the Lord. Now, there's the human side of it too. There's always divine sovereignty and human responsibility, right? So you look at 1 Timothy 3:1, and it says, "If any man desires an overseership, he desires a good work." So elders aren't drafted. Elders aren't elders because we say, "Hey, you know, the last elder died. We needed another guy here, could you come on?" I mean, you can do that in volleyball, you can do that in basketball. You can't do that in oversight in the church. This has to be somebody the Lord has raised up who has a desire for the sheep. And the elders ought to be looking out for the younger men with that heart and with that potential, that the Spirit's working in them to help develop them. Now, the first thing they had to do, though, before we talk about their shepherding, is he says, "Take heed to yourselves." You've got to examine yourself, watch your own life. And we've seen example after example in church history of brothers that have fallen and have ruined their testimony, and impaired their effectiveness for Christ. It's sad, isn't it? We have to remember what 1 Corinthians 10:12 says, "If any man think he standeth, take heed lest he fall." Every time I hear about a brother falling, I say, "That could be me." And I pray, "Lord, help it not to be me, guard me from that." Because I know what my flesh is capable of. I know in myself dwells no good thing. You know, the Lord by His Spirit can cause us to stand, but we can't be indolent and unaware of our own condition. We've got to be examining ourselves. Now, he says, "Take heed to yourselves and to all the flock." And then he says, "Among whom the Holy Spirit has made you overseers, to shepherd the church of God." Or some translations say, "to feed." It's really some of the two. It's the verb that means to feed like a shepherd. Well, how do shepherds feed? They get right down there among the sheep, and they lead them to the green pasture. They lead them to the healthy grass. They keep the sheep from wandering off and eating something that's gonna make him sick or potentially kill him. And so they're aware, they're taking heed to the flock, and they're taking them to the food they need. And brothers, it goes without saying, that to Paul and to other believers in the New Testament, there's only one place to go for the food. It's in the Bible, the Word of God. And so they had to take them there to feed the flock of God, which the Holy Spirit has made them overseers, to shepherd the church of God. And this is so important. How important is the church of God? It says, "which he purchased with his own blood," or it could be rendered maybe a little woodenly, but it conveys the idea, "which he purchased with blood of his own." In other words, God the Father purchased this church by sending His own Son to shed His blood. Now, whenever we say that someone spilled their blood for this, it immediately tells you it's important, right? If somebody says about the American flag, "Men shed their blood to make sure that this flag would stand." We say, "Wow, you know, that's heavy." I can see why we have holidays, Veterans Day and Memorial Day. I can see why we have times before sporting events when we stand up and they play the National Anthem. And I can see why grown men cry when that happens sometimes, because they think about the people that died for that. It's important, right? The love of country. And when you think about people that laid down their lives to preserve country and freedom. But here he's saying, "God Himself made sure that His Son shed His blood to buy this church." How important is this church? The Lord Jesus purchased it with His blood. Therefore, work in the church is the highest work we can do. Your day job may be that you're a Nobel Prize-winning scientist, or that you're the most successful contractor in New York, or that you're a lawyer, or you're a teacher, or whatever your job may be. But the highest thing you can do is serve the Lord in His church. Come and worship the Lord in His church. Build up the church in whatever way the Lord wants you to do it, and it's gonna be unique to you. And Paul here is telling them, "You've been given a privilege." You know, you imagine David Halberstam, back in the early 60s, wrote a book called The Best and the Brightest. And he talked about, it was about the Kennedy administration, and he talked about the very high-powered advisors and cabinet that he had. And people came, like Robert McNamara, who became his Secretary of Defense. He came from Ford Motor Company, and he was this really high-paid executive. He was, I think, even before he got tapped to be in government, when he was at Ford, he was on the cover of Time Magazine. He was considered one of the most brilliant minds in business, because he and some of his other friends had revolutionized the automotive industry, the way they approached it, the way they streamlined it, the way they made vehicles. And so this guy was big and famous, but they got called to work in the White House. So they dropped those prestigious jobs, they dropped those big salaries, they went to work for what for them probably would've been a pittance, but they did that because now we're working in the White House. Now, we're working at the pinnacle of power. We're in the leadership of the government. Now, think about it. Whatever else you do in life as a believer, God says, "You can work in my house too. You can serve in my church." And we ought to bring that attitude to the church, whatever we do in it. This is the church which the Lord purchased with His blood. Now, he's going to begin to warn them then of the dangers against it and what they're gonna have to do to protect it. He says, verse 29, "For I know that after my departure, savage wolves will come in among you, not sparing the flock." We've quoted that several times, and it's such an evocative graphic metaphor, because you think about a wolf coming in. A wolf doesn't come in and gently just kind of gum the sheep and gently carry it off. When a wolf comes in, it grabs the sheep, and it hurts it, and it tears it up. So they do damage. He calls them savage wolves. There's gonna be the enemy from without, there's gonna be attacks from without. We're gonna see the new atheists, we're gonna see Muslims, we're gonna see Hindus, we're gonna see Buddhists, we're gonna see whatever come against the church. But here's even more frightful, I think, that he says, "Also from among yourselves," verse 30, "men will arise up, speaking perverse things, to draw away the disciples after themselves." And we've lived to see this. Men like Brian McLaren, who were raised in evangelical backgrounds. Brian McLaren had a New Testament-style assembly background. And yet, he started out getting very loose and modern on the New Testament church. That was kind of one of the things he was known for back in the 80s. Today, he's known for denying hell, he's known for affirming the LGBT agenda, he's known for presiding over his son's homosexual commitment ceremony. The man has denied the faith as we know it. He's one of the founders of the emergent church. Rob Bell, formerly pastor of a megachurch, Mars Hill Church in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Not to be confused, I think it's Grand Rapids, or maybe it's East Lansing, but in Michigan anyway, not to be confused with the church that used to be in Seattle under Mark Driscoll at the time. But Rob Bell was this Wheaton graduate. Everybody thought, "This guy is it, he's such a great communicator." Rob Bell denies eternal punishment. Rob Bell believes in a form of universalism. Eventually, everybody's gonna be saved. Rob Bell is now one of a group of Oprah Winfrey's favorite gurus. She actually has a tour where she takes Deepak Chopra and Rob Bell and other people, T.D. Jakes is another one, around the country, spreading their message of hope, which is really a false gospel. So we've seen people like that. And we could go back to Cardinal Newman, who became one of the highest officials of the Roman Catholic Church in the 19th century, but he was raised an evangelical Anglican, and he left that to go to the Catholic Church. And on and on it goes. Men who arise, speaking perverse things, speaking errors, to draw disciples after themselves. And he warns them about them. He says, "Therefore," verse 31, "watch, we have to be alert." And he says, "Remember that for three years I did not cease to warn everyone night and day with tears." When Paul speaks about the false teachers in Philippians 3, toward the end of the chapter, he says, "I remind you, and now exhort you with tears, about the false teachers, whose God is their belly." Whether they were people coming, living licentiously, living for their appetites, or whether that means they were trying to bring in Judaistic practices of the food laws, I'm not sure. But Paul was upset about it. And Paul wept tears when he thought about the damage they could do to the people of God. And this shepherd would look at the flock, and he would weep when he thought about those who would be deluded, those who would be led away, those who would not really come to fully believe on the Lord Jesus, but instead would apostatize, and other believers whose effectiveness would be totally compromised by their embracing of error. So you say, "That's pretty solemn. Here was Paul warning them, here was Paul watching himself." You might say, "We don't have the apostles anymore, Keith. What chance do we stand against these kind of enemies?" He says, verse 32, "So now, brethren, I commend you to God and to the word of His grace, which is able to build you up and give you an inheritance among all those who are sanctified." No, we don't have Paul on the scene anymore. We don't have any of these gifted men and women that we read about in the Book of Acts anymore. They have entered into their reward, they've passed on into glory, they're with the Lord. But we still have God, and we still have the word of His grace, and that's what Paul said you need. "I'm commending you to God and the word of His grace, which is able to build you up." You can withstand these attacks, in other words. If you're led to the rock that is higher than you, to paraphrase the Psalmist, you can stand. And Jude would say the similar thing, "unto Him who is able to keep you from falling," he says. And not only that, "to give you an inheritance among all those who are sanctified." So the end is not in doubt. We're going to glory, and God has our inheritance kept secure there. But then, as a parting statement of his own character and trust- But then, as a parting statement of his own character and trustworthiness, verse 33, "I've coveted no one's silver or gold or apparel." Covetousness is a form of idolatry, according to Colossians 3, and it's done great harm to the ministry. When people today, there's even, uh, it was on Twitter a few months ago, somebody started a Twitter feed where they'd put up pictures of the expensive shoes that famous preachers wore. And some of these shoes were worth hundreds and hundreds of dollars, some of them thousands of dollars. And their point was, you know, "Look at these men using funds that are supposed to be for the church and to help the poor and do other things, and they're spending them on tennis shoes." It was not even, we're not talking like leather Italian dress shoes or something, we're talking about tennis shoes. This was total ostentation, total conspicuous consumption. Well, Paul could say, "You can't say that about me, I didn't try to get any of your stuff." Verse 34, "Yes, you yourselves know that these hands have provided for my necessities and for those who are with me." So as I said before, he was willing to work in his tent, uh, uh, in his trade rather, as tent maker and repairing tents to supply his own needs and those with him. And he says, "I've shown you in every way, by laboring like this, that you must support the weak." And remember the words of the Lord Jesus, that he said, "It is more blessed to give than to receive." So Paul was the living demonstration of that. Work hard so that you'll have something to give to others. Brother Henry quoted that verse from 2 Thessalonians, uh, earlier today, "Let him that steals steal no more," or is it Ephesians, I'm sorry. That, he says, "Let him that stole steal no more, so that he may have to give to him that has not." It's to share with those who don't have, and there's the great joy in doing that. Now, when he had said these things, verse 36, "He knelt down and prayed with them all, and then they all wept freely and fell on Paul's neck and kissed him, sorrowing most of all for the words which he spoke, that they would see his face no more, and they accompanied him to the ship." Now, that's a very poignant goodbye. And when you think about it, people today... Hi Bunny, please stay back there, we're on camera. Go sit with Uncle Robbie. Thanks. Anyway, you never know when a ninja will come in the meeting. But Paul was one who lived in such a way among them and had such a ministry... Go over there by Uncle Robbie. That he would say to them here, "I, I'm not gonna see you again," and they cried. Now, I've known some brothers and sisters by the lack of a good contribution to the assemblies they're in, when they announced they're leaving, people cry tears of joy. Well, not literally, but I have known situations where there are believers who are troublemakers, and these believers leave a situation, and it actually helps the assembly that they've left. Because they were a source of contention, and they were a source of division, and they were stirring things up. But it ought to be the case that if we need to leave, either by moving to a new area, or by the Lord taking us somewhere else to serve Him, or by being promoted to glory, that people say, "I miss that brother. I miss that sister. They made such a contribution to our assembly. They were such a help to me, and I miss them." Some of those sisters I was thinking of and mentioned before, we feel that way about in our assembly to this day. Some of the brothers of the past as well. And I really wanna be that sort of believer, that's my ambition. I hope it's yours as well. That the way you serve the Lord, the work you do among the saints, the way you conduct yourselves with them, makes them love you. That when you say, "You won't see me anymore," if that were to be the case, they'd break down and cry, sorrowing most of all for that word, that they'd see you no more. I mean, what a beautiful thing. The Christian fellowship, where these believers were so touched, had been so ministered to by Paul, they saw the reality in him. They saw that he had their back, he had their best in mind. He wanted to bless them and build them up, and give them everything God had for them. And they owed him so much in the things of God. Of course, it was God working through him. But they had this strong love for him. But now, they were parting. And isn't it lovely to think that although we miss believers like that, we miss brothers and sisters that have gone on before, or that have had to move away, that nonetheless, we know there's a great reunion coming. We know there's coming the day when the Lord Jesus will come, and He'll call us all up to be together with Him in the air. And we'll go to heaven's glory, and we'll be forever with the Lord. What a wonderful time that's going to be. With the saints we've known in love, and also with saints we've never met, whom we're going to meet. It's gonna be a tremendous time, an eternal conference, if you will. It will never end. A mountaintop experience that is unrelenting. The glory will never fade from it. And we'll be able to enjoy each other. I like Mr. Darby's hymn where he says, "Nor I alone, thy loved ones all complete, in glory round thee, therewith joy shall meet. All like thee, for thy glory like thee, Lord, object supreme of all, by all adored." And that's what we're headed to, brother. Are there comments or questions at this point? Brother Paul? Hmm. Amen. 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 Brother Paul's reminded us that, um, Paul in the Bible, that Paul, commended them to God and the word of His grace, to God and His word, and those two things stand the test of time, they're the only things. He didn't commend them to a person, or to a church, or an organization. He commended them to God and His word. Amen. Good. Other questions or comments? Yes, Brother Victor? Amen. Amen. Amen, Brother Victor reminds us of the usefulness of following Paul's example, because he was a Christ-like man. We wanna follow the Lord, of course, but as Paul himself put it in 1 Corinthians 11:1, "Imitate me as I imitate Christ." So thank you, yes, he's lived a life that, uh, gives us much to emulate in the, in the leading of the Lord. And a wonderful example of a godly, Christ-like man. Other comments or questions? Brother Ezekiel? Hmm. Yes? Hmm. That's right. Amen. Amen, sir, Brother Ezekiel just pointed us to verse 28, the exhortation of the elders, "To take heed or to pay attention to themselves." And that goes with what we heard in Ryan's testimony earlier, "to examine oneself." And 1 Corinthians 11 tells us to, "Let a man examine himself, and so let him eat." So, that, uh, meeting of remembering the Lord is to lead us beforehand to examining ourselves, and then to come and eat that bread and drink that cup. So, it's very important, especially in dealing with people, and maybe going to correct them, as Brother Ezekiel said. But we have to look at ourselves, and maybe we're the problem. So we have to keep paying attention, we have to be vigilant for others, but also toward ourselves. Amen. Other questions or comments? Going once, going twice, sold? Okay, we can take a break then, um, given the time, maybe, um, maybe we'll just break till supper, if that's okay, or is that too early to break? We could break for 15 minutes, and then I could take 10, five-minute break, and then we'll go on, okay, very good. Let's quickly take a five-minute break, please.